All right, we'll open the work session for the April 17, 2012 Bowling Board Commissioners Meeting. The audience for discussion, Mr. Beppebo, number one, I think is TIF.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Commission knows, our relationship with the TIF is governed by two omnibus documents. The first, what is known as the Local Participation Agreement, and the second is the Master Development Agreement. Basically, they establish the rules of engagement between us and the Chapter 58. This is an evolutionary document that changes as the reality of the project changes, and we're here today to hear about some of the changes that the Chapter 58 would like to make to both documents. Just by way of background, at the request of some of the Commission, we met with Mr. Brooks and Doug Gorman and Rick Kelly about some of the issues contained in the changes. Today, we received some other changes in the afternoon. So I think it'd be appropriate, depending how you want to handle this, for having Kevin or Doug come forward and put before you the request, and then Jean Harmon has prepared, as well as I can, to answer any questions about changes to the document. Is that okay to proceed that way?
That's fine. I see Doug's abandoning Mr. Brooks, so come right ahead.
So much for your cohort.
Well, he's down here. I'm not sure how you want to proceed, Mayor. Maybe I'll just sort of, in summary, say, we actually, the big majority of the changes in these documents were actually before the Commission, Ms. Hill, about 18 months ago, and we decided not to proceed at that time, and decided really several weeks ago now to get them back before you. So, most of these changes were there then. We since have made a few, I actually made a few changes as recently as today, which are just, I think, cleanup. We did meet with your staff yesterday, just, I guess, really to be sure we all understood what we were doing, and we made, as a result of that meeting, some more changes. I personally don't really think any of the ones we made since yesterday are very substantial, but we did, I think, the documents, these two documents are in a lot better shape. The Local Participation Agreement is the fundamental document, what the city is doing there fundamentally is committing its incremental revenues. That's the commitment that the city made quite some time ago. And then the Local Participation Agreement sort of envisions how projects will get financed in the future. The Master Development Agreement is the agreement with the master developer that sets out how we do sub-developer agreements and that sort of thing in the future. I think there's three, two particularly important reasons why these documents need to be amended, and maybe a third. Mostly, it's just catching up with events, is what we're doing. But when these documents were first generated, it was envisioned that there would be, really shortly after the city entered into them, it was envisioned that there would be the sale of TIF bonds, a couple of different bond issues, to finance primarily Block 6. And as you all know, the economy tanked, and one can't sell those kind of bonds anymore, so all that went away. And so there was a great deal of material in here that referred to those bonds, and assumed those bonds would be issued, and so, sort of, all of that was false. The university was actually a party to the Master Development Agreement. The university's project is, you know, virtually complete. There was no reason at all for the university to continue to be a partner in the things that we were doing downtown and beyond downtown, so that was a change, just removing the university. And then another really big thing that happened not too long after these documents were originally promulgated is that the TIF district expanded. We added considerable, we over-doubled the size of the TIF district, and so all of the discussion about what we were going to do with TIF revenues and financing and so forth in these documents only related to what we call the original TIF district, which did not include any of the medical campus farther away from us. And as you all know, we've, we're working hard on a project right now that won't be in the original TIF district, it would be down by the, by the medical center. So, all of those things, I think, are what we're cleaning up. One of the things that we, we added recently, because to me, it's helpful, is that going forward, when we amend these documents, that we can do that by municipal order. We can approve sub-developer agreements, you can approve sub-developer agreements, amendments to this, any approvals that, Jean, tell me if I'm, what I mean for this to say is any approvals that the city has to give, or any changes to any documents, you can do by municipal order, unless there's a state statute that says it needs to be by ordinance. And in the case, for example, of an inter-local agreement, I think that has to be by, and there may be other, Jean would know better than I, but, sort of summarily, that's what, that's what we're doing here. I'll stop and try to answer questions, if you have any.
Do you want me to kind of go through things quickly? I mean, I got a list if you want to go through, not a whole lot, but I think it's like Kevin said, 2008 doesn't sound that long ago, but I think in the TIF, it's an eternity ago. A lot of things have changed between 2008 and today. So some of the things, and I agree, most of the changes, I think, here administrative, just catch up, clean up. As you can see, how many times we've gone through, this is the amended and restated number three, I think, on the LPA, and number two on the master developer. The third important agreement, too, is the local agreement, that's not being amended at this time, because there's not a need to amend that at this point. But showing some of the things that have changed, the master developer agreement that's in place right now has the downtown redevelopment area consisting of, was it Kevin, 106 acres, which is the original district, and there has been amended to pick up the expanded district down to the river, so obviously, we have to do that. The, I think the state grant agreement was, was changed, was approved, after the, these were approved, so that picks up that language as well. And as Kevin said, the way this is being financed has fairly significantly changed since 2008 and today, and that was probably some of the bigger changes in the agreements. They're setting out, kind of removing the incremental bond language, removing the assessment bond language, but bringing in the decent being financed in a variety of different ways, so they put some of that language in to, to make sure that's clear. One thing they did add, if you recall, we amended our code of ordinances, where we did a new definition of old revenues, to pick up jobs moving into the TIF district from other city locations. That was, so that's been added here in the definition of old revenues, so that was a good thing as well for us. And take, you know, some of the other significant things happened, Sky Pike has now been completed. There's some language in here about acquiring Sky Pike property, we don't need that anymore, that's been purchased. Sky Pike is now built and open, so we took some of that out, and now we clarified, basically, you're only property now left for the city, after Block 7, after, left now for the city to convey, at some point, if the developer comes along, it's Block 4, that where the old Scott property was, behind the chamber. The city still owns two-thirds of that block, if I'm guessing, probably close to it, that we still own half to two-thirds of that, which is subject to being developed, too. So, we still have a price tag on that one, at least an agreed-upon price, that continues the same price as before. The thing has been changed, that the old one had, that that would be, once it was sold, had three years to be developed, that's been reduced to two years. Again, the price is, is still the same. One thing has been changed is that we will convey that property straight to the authority upon request, and not run it through the developer first, and then into, to the authority. There was a little bit of proposed changes to the appointment process for the board, that's pretty much gone back to where it was before, so that, that pretty much stays the same. On the master developer agreement, like I said, I think this is amended, restated number two. As Kevin said, the main, one of the main changes is Western's no longer a party to it. If you remember originally, they were going to be part of the garage downtown, renting spaces and paying for those spaces. They're now up in Block 12, so they have nothing to do with the Block 6 garage, so they've been removed as, as a party.
Jean, just to say, does that, I was going to ask you too, Kevin, is that with the nursing school, that potential project, that didn't enter into that?
It's not really necessary for the university to be a part of this document to pursue the nursing school project, but that project is moving.
Okay.
It would just be make them a sub-developer.
That would be, I would assume, a sub-developer agreement, I think, although, maybe not even that, because the medical center's doing it on property they already own, they could sort of do whatever they want, but they will need, well, they already get our assistance through the revenue sharing agreement, so they're going to, they're going to have some TIF revenue, and that may be the only, really, agreement we have with the mayor.
And that revenue sharing agreement, we'll go through here for approval, because we are a party to that as well. I forgot about that, that's the fourth agreement, I guess.
Correct, correct.
So that agreement will come through at some point as well. Master Developer Agreement, a lot of the same changes made in the Local Participation Agreement about assessment bonds, increment bonds, the parking garage is clarified, description was changed. There has been, and I'm going to, may leave it at the end, let Kevin address it, because I know we have a couple people here interested in that, there's some slight variation in the DRA language. This is where the DRA language is, is in the Master Development Agreement, and there's been some slight variation in that language, and I'll let Kevin address that one. I don't think there's much else. They did add the SPE as a party four years ago, the SPE didn't exist, but they're now the owner of the baseball stadiums, they've been brought in and shown as the owner of the stadium. Added about the addition of the 150 spaces to Sky Pike and the garage. You know, all this stuff has just changed in the last four years, we're now trying to catch up and bring all this stuff into the actual agreement. There are some new exhibits, I think you've got copies of, including the parking garage rates that revise, not a whole lot, but slightly. Today, the version we got, they did add a section at the end, I think during the process of the wrap, maybe one or two of the tenants in the wrap have been, I guess, promised some free parking to go along with, connected to how much property the actual leased. Before, we didn't have any of that, so that's been brought in as well, too. The other exhibit that they've now given us, too, is the up-to-date financing plan, that shows the current, I guess, financing of all the projects. The $6.3 million, I think everybody knew, of the bank bonds have been paid, so they've been taken off the list, and everything else is just the current financing for the projects in place.
Are there any more bank bonds, other than PBI? BB and T was a six-point something.
BB and T, actually, and Citizens First held $6.3 million in bonds, and they've been paid in full.
Is that all the, that all the bank did?
Well, those are the only bonds. There is a debt, it's purely an authority debt to PBI, that I think is listed.
The $2 million?
Yeah, that's right.
And then, by the way, I think I had the compensation agreement, the master developer is Exhibit M to the master developer agreement, and there's just a tiny, tiny, very, very minor, I think, correction, not correction, but amendment to that. Still, they, yet the percentage increase goes up at 200 million in development, they get their, they're going to call it bonus payment, 200 million. I think they did throw in language now, 200 million, and wants the state to certify that they've reached 150 million, so they've added that language in as well, and that's the only change to that. I'm sure there's other things, but that's, I think, the summary, it's.
That doesn't change the compensation, that just clarifies the point at which they reach.
Yes, yes, compensation amount's not changed at all, it just kind of changes when it kicks in.
So Alliance was to get money when it originally was 150 million, anyway, in the original agreement?
I think they got, Kevin, cut me wrong, they got payment when the contract was signed, then they get, like, I think, a percent up to 150 million, 200 million, then a percent and a half after 200 million, and then 200 million, there's another bonus payment as well for reaching that. What they brought in this time, I said, well, the bonus payment kicks in 200 million, but in addition to 200 million, we now also required to have the state certify that the 150 million dollar threshold has been met. That language was not in the originals, so they added that state certification language.
Which grants the signature TIF status, which releases the state funding back to the TIF program.
And the whole discussion there, Commissioner Waltrip was, I guess, implicit in that, was that there was a bonus when, when we got the signature TIF status, and when that was written, that number was 200 million. The state changed it to 150 million, but we still left the bonus at 200.
What's the bonus? Is it a percentage?
It's 500,000.
500,000, and then a percentage increase.
No matter how much, well, we could get 300 million, they don't get any more, so, yeah.
And then, I think that's, there was one thing, except we had some talking points, I hate to use those words, some issues or things we were talking about, we met with them yesterday, went over, I think, what, 95% of them, I think everybody agreed to and changed. The only other issue, if there is outstanding at all, is a couple of points in the agreement they went in and added, for example, the financing plan and the projects within the district, they've had language now, can be approved by authority, by the authority of the authority, I hate saying double words here. And, you know, we had some questions about that, about issues of control and oversight, whether you all sufficient with that. You know, a couple of things, one, we are a signature to the revenue sharing agreement, so, you know, any pledge of revenues, we have to sign off on. Pursuant to Chapter 11, any sub-developers that have to come through us for approval, and we'll figure out nursing home, or not nursing home, nursing school, when it goes through, a little bit different, you know, when that one goes through, we'll figure out what we need to do about that one. So, you know, if that's, you know, is that a significant issue, I'm not sure I'm here to say, I mean, we had, we raised an issue, we raised a question about it, we talked about it, and it's still there, but I'll, we're, still, a lot of things still have to go through us for approval. And I think their point was that, well, the financing changes fairly often, they need to be able to deal with that. Projects change from time to time, they need to be able to maybe deal with that without having to come to sitting county for approval, but I'll let Kevin answer that, address that if y'all have got questions on that.
Well, if you look at the original financing plan, which is just a, sort of a sheet that shows as an attachment there, if you look at the very original one, and you look at the one now, you'll see how dramatically it's changed, and it's changed not all at once, but 10 times. And so, I guess our notion was that if it does not impact the city budget at all, and we're just, for instance, if we said we were going to sell bonds, and we decide that we're not going to do bonds, we're going to do a bank note, that really wasn't any reason for us to come back here with those kind of changes. I mean, we don't, I really don't think we would mind doing that, but we didn't think it was, it made a lot of sense. And in most of those situations, again, like the nursing school, not all of them, but in most of them, I think we would be doing sub-developer agreements, and you have to approve those.
So, Kevin, I'm sorry, I mean, so you wouldn't come back to either city or county, the authority would just make that decision?
We never have gone back to county.
Never have gone, yeah. Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I know at the last meeting, Kevin, I brought it up about DRA, where we are not going to be involved in funding anymore, but who owns the building that the DRA is in right now?
My understanding, DRA does. I mean, I'm sure they do. I haven't gone and looked, but, yeah, I think that's right.
Okay, was it, was it to be some type of conveyance of money to DRA?
Well, then, the original plan was that we would, again, sell TIF bonds, and we would spend about $2 million upgrading that building, and then it would be leased by the master developer. None of that happened, obviously, because we didn't, we didn't sell TIF bonds, we didn't spend $2 million on the, on the building. So, I understand a little bit better the question you had last time, but I think that's, I think that's probably the 100,000 that we were talking about. That number didn't mean anything to me at the time, but that's it. That was the plan.
What, Joe, the man, what, what, does this have anything to do with that, with the DRA and that arrangement?
That arrangement was in here, yes, yes, sir. That arrangement was in, when I say in here, it was in the master developer agreement.
Initially, yes, but the amended one?
Yes.
No.
Give me a minute, it's, there's something in here about it.
I just looked at it on page 16.
And what we do is, actually, it's still in there, but we clarify that the obligation to rent is contingent upon the $2 million improvements. So, that, and if you're looking at a black line version, you'll see that change there.
And that didn't happen because?
We didn't sell, just one of those, a good portion of this document, I assumed that we would be selling TIF bonds, and we didn't. We actually, we're probably within a very few months of being able to do that when things went bad, so.
With the economy.
Yep.
Any other questions?
If we're not going to sell bonds, how do you expect to make these improvements now?
We don't have any way of making them now, but, I mean, if it's, assume it, somebody's going to have to help us come up with $2 million to do the improvements. So, I mean, we could take that out altogether, because it is.
So it wasn't Alliance's responsibility to come up with the $2 million, it was the authority's responsibility? Is that?
It was our, well, no, it was very clear, it was going to be TIF bonds. Yeah, it was going to be TIF, yeah. And it was, so I guess, I guess it was probably ours, I mean, ours, the counties, I guess the county would have been the issue with those bonds, but it was all of our collective job to get those bonds done, and it didn't happen.
And then, just for clarification, for those that are watching, a TIF bond is a loan that is in anticipation of future income based on the redevelopment of an area.
Yeah. A TIF bond is, is hard to imagine now, it's a remarkable thing. There was a strong and vigorous market of investors who would buy bonds that had no general obligation of any government, and actually, no obligation of anybody or any company, just, they would look at the projected stream of TIF revenue and said, yeah, we'll own money against that.
People will do that.
And they don't, actually, there have been a few recently, at sort of ridiculous rates, but it's a practical matter, there's no market for them.
What role does DRA and the master developer, or whatever language, is there a relationship between those two? And I go back, we all realize that the funding of DRA in the quick building is going to end. What type of relationship does that entity have with the master developer and all the other things that are going on downtown?
None officially or legally that I know of, Mr. Denny, other than what we've already been discussing here, other than I would assume we're all, you know, in a global sense, trying to row the same boat and develop downtown.
So, you're saying both of those entities have the responsibility of developing downtown, or does the DRA fit into that picture? I get a little confused, of course, it's easy for me to get confused about the things that are taking place in this document, and from day one, as you are, as you well aware, as to who's who, and what's going to happen where, and so on.
Well, I'm not the best person to answer you in great detail about what the mission of DRA is. I mean, I have an understanding of it, really mainly from the media, but certainly, they have a mission of promoting downtown development. I think historically, that was their mission. The authority and the DRA are fundamentally different entities, and different kinds of entities. We're really a quasi-governmental, we can issue bonds, we're an instrumentality of Warren County government. DRA, I believe, is a nonprofit corporation, which has received government funds, but I don't believe it's an instrumentality of city government. So, from a lawyer's viewpoint, that's a big difference. I don't know if I've answered your question, but that's about the best I can tell you about it. In other words, I don't know what, right now, I'm sure they can tell you exactly, they have a mission statement, and I don't know what it, what it says, I'm not trying to be short about it, I just don't know exactly.
You mentioned before, Mr. Brooks, because I'm new to this, I still, so I'm clear on this number five regarding the building, can nothing happen to that building till these improvements are made?
No, I think they could.
We could.
They could do whatever they want to it. They could sell it today, rent it, it's just that this can't happen without the TIF.
Well, let me jump in, because I don't want to say they can sell, I'm not real sure, this property was built with, was purchased with CDVG funds.
Okay.
So there's going to be some conditions on, on, and I'm not the CDVG person, so I'm not sure what those are, but I want to make sure everybody understands, that's how we bought that building, with CDVG funds.
So Jean has just proved that I was correct when I said I'm not an expert.
There was a five-year limitation on something as part of the contract.
It may also be a 20-year, too, though.
Big pardon?
Maybe a 20-year as well, too.
But they, they certainly could lease it, I think, to a tenant, and in fact, I guess we've seen in the paper that they intend to do that, so, and that has nothing to do with what's in this agreement.
And made it by Kevin up a little bit, too. I mean, I think these agreements make it clear that the downtown, the Warren County Downtown Authority is the entity for the oversight and administration of the, of the TIF district, the 300 and some acres. And again, we've got DRA representatives here who can, you know, then, you know, jump in, I guess, what DRA does, you know, I would hope and expect, and I think everybody else would, that they'd work hand in hand, because they've got common interest here, but it's Kevin's authority, by these documents, that they're actually responsible for administration and oversight of the TIF. DRA was brought into these agreements, I think, in my view, on a very, very minor issue, with the hope and expectation that because, once some of the bonds were issued, they may, they may put out enough money to help renovate that building, because it's been, you know, it's been there now for, I mean, wouldn't we buy it, mid 90, or mid 2000s? We probably owned it, you know, I don't know, seven, eight years total or more, with the idea that, you know, TIF revenue would be there to help pay for the renovations, and then it could be leased out and anything else. But as Kevin said, there's been zero TIF, TIF bonds sold.
I guess I should say one other thing, I don't, again, I don't know what DRA's geographical boundaries, but I guess I'm given to believe that they're not as specific as ours are. I mean, we have an approved footprint, and that's it. And, for example, the square is not in the TIF district, we're not in the TIF district as we sit here, my office is not in the TIF district, so there's a, we would have no involvement in those areas.
And the square is not?
The square is not.
So everything around the square, the business and so on, or if the new business comes in to downtown, the TIF is not involved in that?
That's correct.
In any kind of way? Nor will 10% or whatever the percentage is be paid to the master developer?
No. The master developer's compensation is not based on anything that happens in the square, we don't get any incremental revenues from this, it's just not in the TIF district.
Yes, sir.
I want to clarify, talking about the relationship between the authority and the DRA, and the desire of everybody, work together to advance the cause of downtown, but there's only one entity, I want to make sure that we're clear, that can authorize TIF revenues, and that is the authority.
So.
That's correct.
In essence, anybody who wants to access, whether it's the DRA or whether it's any other entity, if they're, have the ability to develop something in downtown, and they want to access some of that, then what they have to do is they have to come to the authority, and the authority would then have to become a player in that, in order for them to, to access those TIF revenues.
Correct.
Okay.
They would be a sub-developer at that point, is what, is that what you're saying?
Well, they could be, they, yeah, they could be. Just as a, sort of as an example, again, I'm sort of shooting from the hip here, but if they wanted to do something in their building down there, and they felt like there was a justification for utilizing TIF revenues, and they, they would come to us for that, I'm, I'm guessing maybe that we don't do a sub-developer agreement with them, because they, again- they, again, they already own it. Typically, what we do, the, the general idea of sub-developer agreements initially was that the Authority would acquire property, and then they, we would enter into a sub-developer agreement with a private entity, and they would develop that property, and a primary incentive we're giving to that private developer is we're giving them the real estate, in this case, DRA already owns that real estate. So I'd have to think about that one a little bit, Commissioner Waltrip. We might do a sub-developer agreement, but I'm inclined to think maybe we wouldn't have to. Maybe since, if they were to be using TIF revenues, maybe we would need to do that.
But if I can, I'll maybe add one more duty and responsibility of, and keeping authorities, but this authority that the DRA doesn't have, even if there's a project that comes into the TIF district that doesn't go to the Authority and ask for money, the Authority has the duty and responsibility, along with Jeff's office, to make sure they stay on top of all development within the TIF district, and make sure they keep involved with wages, and jobs, and construction work, you know, because, you know, they need that TIF money coming in, and they need, you know, the 150 million, so that's another duty and responsibility they have, that, you know, a little bit different than the DRA as well, because they have to keep track of this 300 and how many acres we've got now, and, and watch not only their own development, but also development by which they may not have any interest, well, they have interest in, but, but really not a TIF project.
In essence, the TIF Authority, the Chapter 58, it's got so many names, but the, the organization that Mr. Brooks is representing as he stands there at the podium is the city's agent on downtown redevelopment.
Within the TIF district.
Within the TIF district.
Yes.
And there was a time when, I want to go back to 2005, that I believe that the DRA carried that title of the city's agent on downtown redevelopment.
Yeah, I think we at some point, like in this board or something, kind of delegated the main responsibility for downtown redevelopment to DRA.
And that came to an end, and then we moved forward with?
I think once we started going to TIF, and we created a TIF district, and you're right, the county appointed, created the Authority, and we delegated them as our agent for the TIF district, you know, I think at that point, they became the city and the county's agent for downtown redevelopment within that 300 acres.
Originally, wasn't that under the Chapter 99 program where the city would acquire a piece of property, hopefully sell it, take that money, acquire another piece of property, and?
Well, we kind of first started downtown redevelopment under, under Chapter 99.
We didn't get very far with that.
Yeah, well, we bought a lot of property.
Actually, Mayor, I'm not an expert on your Chapter 99 plan, but from my viewpoint, and sort of looking at planning, the Authority really is sort of the heir to the Chapter 99 plan more closely than it is to DRA, really, geographically and goals and so forth.
The data we use to justify that TIF was the Chapter 99?
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your staying with me on this. I, I came on the commission in 2011, and so I have not been previous, Joe and Bruce Slim had from the beginning, so catching up is, is difficult to say the, say the least. This was, this document was going to be presented in the fall of 2010, is that right?
Yes.
Are there significant changes?
Since then?
Since then.
Not really. We've, we've made some changes recently, but I really believe that they're clear. The big changes that were being made then were recognizing that we had an expanded TIF district, recognizing that we weren't selling TIF bonds, and recognizing that the university's out of it, those really were the big things. Now, the financing plan has changed a little bit, because we've since built a garage, and we finished Skypack, but not, I would say not, really.
And I'll piggyback on something that Joe said about the DRA, and I would suspect that DRA funding may be eliminated from the city, although I would not be in favor of eliminating that, and again, I may be in the minority on, on that issue. Give me an example, Kevin, if you don't mind, just to help me think through this, is the city, and this may not be a fair statement, you tell me if it's not, okay? I know you will. Is the city giving up some oversight of this, of the TIF issue because of these amendments?
Well, it's a fair question, and the answer is yes. My, my opinion is that you're giving up the opportunity to review things, which, again, in my opinion, it didn't make a lot of sense ever to me that the city should review. I don't think that you're giving, I don't think there's any way that you're going to be embarrassed, we certainly cannot imperil city funds at all with any of these approvals. So, but there are, there are occasions, and we've talked about, the finance plan's probably the best example, that we can just, we can change that. I think it's, first of all, I'm not sure why you'd want to do it, and second of all, just working on Block 6, as many of us have been in recent weeks, this change, it changes every three days. So it's, it's, as things do in the private sector, and so it's awkward, it would be awkward to get city's approval, but if I answered your question.
Are there any other examples other than the financing plan? What I, what I want to make sure, in my mind, is that, that we are doing our due diligence with oversight, I don't want to just give it up because it's easier to give it up, you see, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be ugly with that statement.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we're not giving up things that we should be watching, and, and I hate to even bring this up, but we had a little convention center fiasco where we gave up, and I'm not, and I don't want to compare those two boards either, because I know and respect the people on Chapter 58, and obviously respect you, but, again, just need to know that we're not giving up things on the oversight that we shouldn't be giving up because it's the easiest thing to do.
You know, all I can give you is my opinion, and I really don't think you are, and, and I think it is, I understand completely the question about that other board, I was actually on it when it imploded, so.
I'm not sure how that makes me feel, but.
I know.
I'm sorry.
I just, soon as I went on.
I'm sorry, that, that came out of my smart mouth, and I should not have said that.
Soon as I went on, it blew up, I thought, what's up with this? But anyway.
I'm sorry.
Again, I, there is, I really think, zero opportunity for us to expose the city to financial risk. We, we are audited every year, and, and we're obligated to provide financial information to you regularly, you have representatives at our board meetings, you've got two people on the board, and so, none of those kind of things existed in that other example.
And, and again, it may not have been fair to even bring that up.
No, I mean, I understand, understand completely the question, but I, I don't think that you're giving up any sort of, any sort of oversight. We're here quarterly, I mean, none of that kind of stuff went on with that other board, and we'll come back more often if you like.
Jean, would that be the position of the city as well?
Which, and we talked yesterday at the meeting, too, it's, you know, granted, they cannot impact city money, that has to come through us, they, they don't have the ability to approve sub-developer agreements without our approval, they can't commit incremental revenues without approval, and that's, that's probably, you know, that may be one document that we haven't seen yet that's under, what, under reconstruction, if that's the term, that may help address some of those issues, is that revenue sharing agreement, because I understand it's going through, what, fairly significant revisions or?
The, the effort is to try to make it understandable.
Understandable, yeah, which will be maybe the first time.
I, I don't need to ask any questions about that then, right now, do I?
Well, I think that one will, you know, that one may help to understand, that's going to be set up to help maybe, what, block by block, at least some way, make it a little bit more understandable about what's going where and what's been pledged where, because last, and not to say the last two were difficult to understand, but the last two were difficult to understand, and I think the now's being rewritten, and hopefully make it a little bit easier for everybody to understand that, that document.
But that doesn't impact any of this at all, is what you're saying?
No, and.
Well, it does, it does have control, though, because we have to approve, I guess, the use of incremental revenues, if that changes, that comes through us for approval, too. And we talked yesterday, it's still a little bit, I guess, you know, unclear, because we're not, you know, Jeff and I and Kevin, we're not involved in the other Kevin's day-to-day operations with the Authority, so, you know, we're not real sure of what they do on a day-to-day basis, and what they approve, and what they, you know, everything they look at and evaluate and stuff every day. So, you know, I can sit here and say that, well, you know, this means that y'all have absolute control, 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 well, no, but I'm also not real sure, you know, what they do approve, you know, what, you know, if there's anything that, that definitely in my mind has to, should be coming here, it's, it's a little bit, I think at this point, maybe if I'm trying to make any sense at all, maybe a little bit unclear about, you know, what, what things they will be approving without y'all's approval, and even less clear, if anything they say yes to or change, what impact that's going to have on, on, on your review authority.
In this document, the significant thing that, we, we actually talked about removing any reference to the financing plan in here, but it was too awkward to do, so, but the one, the one thing that we can change as drafted without city approval is the financing plan. I don't think my client is all that passionate about that, I mean, if you want, if you want to approve it, we'll change it back. We just thought it was prudent to do it this way, but it's not a.
Define what you mean by financing plan, because that has a different meaning to different people.
Well, the financing plan is an attachment to the master developer agreement that says, we're going to finance the College of Nursing by the sale of $20 million in bonds, and we're going to finance Skypack this way, we're, it just explains how we have or how we contemplate financing projects, is really all it is. And so the point would be, we're working rather feverishly to nail down, as you all know, the Block 6 rap, and we're very close to knowing what that plan's going to be, but we don't know for sure what that's going to be, and we, we would not have to come back to you and say, okay, we've decided to sell an industrial revenue bond, we would just decided to do it, but honestly, I don't believe that that, that's something that we're just dying to take out of this, we just thought it, so if it's critical to the commission, tell us.
Well, and, and reality, it's exhibit both, through the test space agreement and a master developer agreement, different exhibits, and in reality, when you look at this, probably about half of this, the city in the past never did officially come in, and by municipal order to approve anyway, I mean, we didn't approve the PBI bank note, or the Skypack Build America bonds, so a lot of the stuff we did not, you know, ever, the city is, doesn't any take a position on anyway, the Newmarket tax credits for the baseball stadium, we were aware of it, I think we did actually come through and approve something, authorizing them to put a mortgage on a baseball stadium, but even in that document, we did not come in and say, we hereby authorize and approve the issuance of Newmarket tax credits, in order, I'll be honest with you, I think in that situation that we wanted to, because we weren't that familiar with what they were, you know, they basically come to us and asking for permission to put a mortgage on a baseball stadium, because the interlocal agreement said they had to get our approval to do that, so we said, fine, this what you're doing, we give you the authority to put a mortgage on a baseball stadium, so, but most of these other things, I don't think they ever came here.
No.
Anyway.
Yes, sir. Jean, Jeff, or Kevin? There is no decision that the Authority can make that can impact the city's budget. True or false?
Without our approval.
Without our approval.
Without our approval, yes.
Yes, true or false?
True.
Okay.
Pursuant to this agreement, now, if you change this agreement or change some other thing, now, that doesn't reflect the rap issue, no.
Correct.
Which is a whole different issue.
But the rap issue has to still come here.
Yes.
What I'm talking about is, is in, in, the revisions that sit before us today, no change that we're making to, to kind of address Commissioner Waltrip's concern about giving up the ability to control things or have oversight of, when we, when it boils down to brass tacks, there's no part of the revisions that are being proposed that prevents, that, that will impact the city's budget, that the five people who sit here, whoever they may be, and the city staff who sits out there, whoever they may be, would know about it and ratify it before it occurs.
They're required to bring any changes in the financial partnership with us, to us, and have your approval. When we met with them, we basically made it clear, and they understood, that, look, we're in this 80/20, that's, that doesn't change. We're in this, we have to approve all developer agreements, that it could impact us, because we don't want moving around of assets on, on a chessboard within the community.
Right.
We wanted you to have that. We made it clear that the rap issue was a different issue, because that could be material in terms of our, our finances, depending on the mitigators that are proposed by the Chapter 58 against our risk. Jean, oh, the easiest way to do this is go down through the various lack, the, the things that have changed that no longer require approval, and for everybody to determine whether they're material or not. In our mind, what's material is financial, what has been amended in this agreement is a ministerial, is that a good way to put it?
Yeah, I, I'd probably agree with that, the only thing I could think of, maybe, but I still think we would catch it on a tail end, if, if they amended the financing plan, the Authority did, and part of the amendment of the financing plan, they recommitted incremental revenues to a project, you know, for example, we're still on line to get incremental revenues for the baseball, for our GO bonds, I'm not sure where we are now, we're third, fourth, wherever we are, that's where we are. You know, they, now, if they came in and amended the financing plan, it said, now we're going to pledge, because of this ability to finance this, we've got to amend or change the pledge of the incremental revenues to make this work, you know, they, they can do that, but still, I think we would get that to approve as well, because that's part of the revenue sharing agreement, that they then would have to amend and bring back to us, too, without making this more complicated than it already is.
Well, is that your interpretation, too, Mr. Brooks?
Well, the revenue sharing agreement already provides that we can't, I think, I don't, obviously have it in front of me, but it, we'll see when it comes back, but it already provides that we cannot do anything that would impact the city's revenues.
Position, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, we can't do that. If we wanted to change your relative position in the pecking order, then we can't.
Petramin agreement.
We can't do that, so.
Without amendment to that agreement.
I guess it would be one other thing, and I'll let Jeff speak, the, the revenue sharing agreement also, that you have a significant protection, because there's all kinds of entities interested in how that, you know, the College of Nursing is interested, and the Skypack bonds are interested, all those people, you know, pledges have already been made, and so, we can't, we can't change any of those things.
Tell me if this is correct, Jean, what we're saying in this revised agreement, that the Chapter 58 is our agent.
Yes.
And we are freeing them up to use the money that we have agreed to give them for, for the execution of the purpose which we commissioned them, without our pre-approval on the minor details of that, how we spend the money, how they spend the money.
Yeah, I, I think after being with them yesterday and reviewing this, you know, the other Kevin's probably, is probably pretty accurate, I think, that, you know, I think the things they're talking about, that they want to approve without having to come back here through municipal order, ordinance, or anything else, are relatively ministerial type things, the big things still have to come here, if they want our money, it has to come here, if they change the flow of money, it has to come here, if they want to do a sub-developer agreement, it has to come here, you know, maybe the nursing school might be a different issue, if the medical center's doing it on their own property, you know, for example, you know, if I own property down in the district and I want to build a donut shop down there, you know, I don't have to come to anybody, if I own it, I just go build it, I don't have anybody's permission or anything else, that's just them doing it. But, you know, the major, no doubt about it, the major issues that, particularly anything, you're right, they cannot impact city dollars, they can't pledge city money without.
That's why I think this is, is a terribly complicated issue, and I think we need to talk about the complications, but whenever we can, we need to boil it down to make it as simple to be understood from the taxpayer as possible, and there's no decision that's being made, no decision that's being proposed, that's going to impact the city's budget without the five people, whoever they are, who are sitting here, knowing about it in advance. I mean, not a dollar can be spent, no control is being given away that says, Chapter 58, spend the city's money, it, it's, it's just not happening.
They have the right to spend the city money we've already agreed, agreed to give them.
Yeah.
On the 80/20 split, on the TIF.
I think this revenue sharing agreement is the most critical piece of this whole --
I think this revenue sharing agreement is the most critical piece of this whole puzzle that we'll be getting, and that's really where the rubber meets the road, as far as the, the money goes. And that's where we, we have to keep our eyes on the ball with that one, to know what's changed on that. And I'm assuming it's going to pull in what we've agreed to on Block Six rap development as well, with the revenues we're, we're being assigned towards the, the IRB issue. Is that correct, Kevin? I think it will, and it's the, it's the, it's Peck Schaefer, who's bond counsel for the IRB, that's working on it, and I'll, I'll be interested to see what he does with it. But I'm in, I'm in agreement with, what I'm saying is, I'm in agreement with Kevin and Gene. This is administrative, the, in my opinion, the important stuff is still on the way with the revenue sharing agreement.
Well, that requires a separate vote?
Yes.
Okay. If that requires a separate vote, your answer is yes.
That's what I, and that's what I'm trying to get to, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, I just, too often, the, these issues get portrayed as somehow we're being less than transparent. And I get that it's complicated, and it's hard to understand, it's hard for us to understand. But there's no portion of this that is making this less transparent, when it comes down to city dollars. That, that the taxpayer can, can rest assured that the money that flows into the city, the decisions concerning those monies are going to be made by the five people who sit here, whoever they might be.
And I might add, that the revenue sharing agreement is the, is the document, the, the local participation agreement is really the agreement where the city committed its incremental revenues. The revenue sharing agreement is the document by which we spend those incremental revenues. But the document that's coming back to is not going to change much at all. It's just hopefully going to be easier to understand, because it has evolved, it's very complicated to read and understand, and we hope that it'll be, the main goal in redoing it now is, relates to going out on the bond market, when we're relying on TIF revenues, and the buyers of these bonds try to read this document, Jeff, and it's just really hard. So, there's not really going to be a lot of profound changes in it.
When will the revenue sharing agreement come before?
We expected a draft now.
Through bond council's draft.
We thought we'd, I thought we really'd have it by now.
That'll be a separate vote than the, the two votes that are required.
We're, we're a party, you're a party, the county's a party. I can't remember, it was a bank, do they, do they still need to be?
The bank does, the bank has agreed that they don't have to approve it, they're writing me a letter to that effect today, I hope, so, yeah.
But we've had, what, two versions of that in the past, too, this will be?
Well, we've had two, but then we had those interim financing, I forgot what we called them.
Yeah, interim financing agreement.
We did that twice, and that's part why it's so complicated to read, because we had a document, an amended document, two kind of supplemental documents. So, we've, you've looked at it three times, city commissioner's looked at it three times previously, and this will be a fourth. We had the forty percent of the eighty percent of the twenty percent of the kind of language.
Whatever's left going somewhere else.
Would it be accurate to say that we have, under the agreement, allowed them to use eighty percent of the incremental revenues, correct, from a certain TIF district? And we're unfettering them to make the individual decisions, how they're going to spend that money pursuant to certain guidelines?
They're the ones, the authority are the, is the entity out there in, in working with the, with the developer, master developer, to bring projects into the TIF district and figure out which ones, I assume, need assistance, and where the money's going to flow after that, and, I mean, that's, that's why they're there.
That's what we did. That's exactly right.
So, the reason we're here doing this cleanup is what purpose?
These documents were just so outdated. Time had passed them by so much. I don't really know that anything really substantive in terms of going forward, that we have to have these, but they, you could read these, and they didn't really comport to a reality. So, I think that's the reason we're doing it.
Well, I, I thought for sure the master developer agreement had to, because it's still talking about the master developer doing the master development in a hundred acres in the region TIF district.
Yes.
Just for the comfort and reality, Gene, will you detail, please, the changes that no longer require commission approval? Do you have that list in your mind?
I think from what Kevin said, basically, issues dealing with the financing plan.
I think it's just the financing plan. We'll both look back. The other big change, though, is, is really, to me, is changing, going forward, changing your approvals from ordinance to municipal orders, so that we can kind of one-stop-shop, if you will, all those.
And if you want to explain, I got one more issue Jeff brought up before we leave, too, while we explain that. By statute, interlocals have to be approved by ordinance. Recently, when we approved everything, we approved like three documents altogether, as we did about ordinance, the one, the local participation agreements, master developer agreement, interlocal agreement, and we did initially everything together by ordinance. So, just historically, since we've always done everything by ordinance, at least those big documents, we've kept on doing that by ordinance through the, through the years. Because the master developer agreement was approved by ordinance, then we basically said, okay, we'll approve the sub-developer agreements by ordinance too. Probably, we don't have to, you know, we could probably do those by municipal order, but just basically, we started because we had to do the interlocal by ordinance, and everything was lumped together, we just kind of followed that trail throughout. We could certainly look in the future which ones we need to, which ones we don't.
And the issue, and the issue being on ordinance, you have to have two readings per that four, you just do the one. Just going back to the master developer, just a, a second, on the $500,000 that they receive when we're declared a TIF.
Signature TIF.
Signature District.
And reach 200 million.
And reach 200 million.
Correct.
So, both of those things have to happen.
That's correct.
And I know that somebody will ask this question at some point. Does a master developer, by doing this, do they get more money? Do they just get the money sooner? Do?
By, under what we're doing here?
Yes, sir.
It does not change it at all?
Doesn't change it at all.
No. In fact, in a very technical sense, that we've sort of thrown one more little thing that has to happen, and that is state certification of signature TIF status, but obviously, if we're at 200 million, one would think the state would have certified the 150, so.
In fact, the only issue I want to bring up is one, and Jeff brought up, I should have two. There is a section, paragraph added in, in the compensation agreement that talks about termination. Before, we didn't have a termination date, now we do. It says it terminates earlier of the date of the end of the grant agreement, which is December 31, 2014, right? Or them reaching $300 million in, in, and what, where the term is.
Whichever comes first.
Yeah, capital investment.
Right.
Whichever one of those occurs first, then this compensation agreement will end.
Was, was there a change in the default agreement? If, if there was a default in this, can give more responsibility to the authority?
There was, um, there was a change, maybe Gene can find it while I'm talking about it. No, I don't think it really gives more responsibility to the authority. There was a change that if there is a default by the master developer, you have the right to terminate, that was always in there, but there's a provision that says that if there's a replacement master developer, or for terminating the master developer, that the, the guarantees that the master developer has already undertaken have got to be replaced. Master developer has guaranteed in the millions of dollars of obligations, and so, the idea is, if we fire you, and we're not going to pay you anymore, then we've got to relieve you of those obligations.
And the agreement says that the authority will do that, not the city, but the authority will.
Yeah, the city's not obligated to do that. I guess we're obligated to find a way to do that, if we terminate. Now, the, the major part of those obligations relate to the New Markets Tax Credits, which were sold, and we're almost halfway through that. There's a seven-year period, and we're into the third time flies, we're at least three years in, I think three and a half.
And does changing that default, and if the master, and if the master developer were released, is that a standard practice to relieve them of the responsibility, where they don't, and I, and you can tell I don't, I'm not sure of my question.
Well, I, I think we're in a area where standard practice, I don't know if anybody knows what standard practice is, but I guess I would say, if they default, if there's a significant material default, of course, it's standard practice to terminate their arrangement. And if it's, if not standard practice, at least logical to say to them that if we're gonna, we're gonna remove from you the benefits of this bargain, we're also going to remove the burdens of this bargain, and totally extricate you, I think it would be difficult to say, you're never going to get any more money, but you're still on the hook for all this stuff. I think that's the thought.
Okay.
All right?
Just something that's still concerning me, in the very beginning, you mentioned you were going to bring this up 18 months ago.
Uh-huh.
Why now? Why not 18 months ago?
Eighteen months ago, we, I think, we're not necessarily, when I say we, I'm sort of speaking for city staff, I'm certainly speaking for my board, we're not really of one mind on some of the significant issues in here, for, to be honest. And also, 18 months ago, it was not critical, I believe we, we approved, Gene, remind me, on one of those?
Revenue sharing agreement.
The revenue sharing agreement, so that a project could go forward, we had to get that done in the fall of '09, '10, fall of '10. We didn't really have to get any of these, again, it was a cleanup project, and frankly, one of the issues that was on the table is this 200 versus 150 threshold for the master developer, do we move it, or do we not move it? And it was getting in the way of us doing our business to keep projects going, so we just pulled it. Frankly, we should have turned back to it more, there's not any magical reason we're doing it, now we should, we should have done this months ago, but, you know, squeaky wheel gets grease. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Just so we're clear.
Yes, sir.
The next agreement you bring to us about the rap is separate from this issue.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And there'll be quite a few documents with that as well.
But we'll be soon, yeah, yeah. We hope.
We hope.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is our...
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you for coming, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, I apologize. Does anybody in the audience have something to say? Mr. Barron, come on up.
Mike Barron, downtown businessman, and I'm a DRA board member, and I've been attending these meetings on and off for five years or so, and I've been on the DRA board two times. And one, I'd like just to address a few of the issues, sort of from a layman's perspective. The question came up of what's the boundaries for DRA? And I've all, always understood those to be the bypass to the railroad tracks, and the edge of Western Kentucky University down to the river. And that that's defined up in Frankfurt as the district, and within that district, there were historical areas identified, and DRA had its responsibilities within that area. And that, as the TIF district was established, really within that larger district, but responsibilities for development were then given to Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority. It took me a year to learn that. But then, the rest of the district would still be responsibility of DRA. And over those years, I saw the funding from the city decrease, with the thought that DRA would become self-sufficient. And the plan for that was this building that they now occupy and own, 601 State Street, being renovated, so that it could be rented, and they would have office space in there. And that was the plan for the future funding of DRA, and the responsibilities that it carries out. And it just seems from the discussion today, that a lot of other things have continued with the TIF bond failure to be issued. Look around us, you know, we've got the ball field, the Skypack, and all sorts of things, but what never did get done was the development and renovation of that building, 601 State Street, which puts DRA in a big bind, for it to carry out its responsibilities. So, I see that as a big issue for, for DRA, and I do believe that they do great work. Ron Murphy here is head of that organization now, I think we can do a whole lot of good in conjunction with the Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority, and together, you know, make Bowling Green everything that it can be. And so, I'm hoping that all this will work out to the benefit of all of us. I'm, I have two businesses downtown, and I, I live downtown in Baltimore, it's joy, and I just love the place, and I've been here not as long as many of you, but it's, it's home, and I just want to see us, you know, be all you can be, as we used to say in the army. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barron, and do appreciate your interest in investment downtown, all of it, that have come in. Anyone else? All right.
Mayor, next item concerns the recommended fee changes for park and rec for next year, as I mentioned to you at last work session, that we traditionally, at least the last five years or so, have brought changes in our fee structure to the commission, to get your imprimatur on those changes. There was some discussion at the last meeting, and it was thought that we should have some more work session time on that, to go over some of the issues. I know there's been some discussions among Ernie and members of the commission, between the commission themselves, so now probably be appropriate time to proceed, however the commission would like, on these fee changes, if any. If it would be helpful, Ernie's here, if you want him to come up and...
Mr. Gibbs? Would you mind telling us what you did between now and the last, last meeting we had?
Well, I listened to what y'all said, and took notes of it. I met with Commissioner Hill on Thursday, and just explained some of the rationale behind the choices and some alternatives, and we've had a very good discussion, our recommendations, we still have 313 fees. If I worked much longer in this, that could be bigger than Kevin's. But we've gone down to 29 changes down from 42. Major things, increased the burial fee at Fairview Cemetery for weekday burials by $50 from $475 to $425, which will match the other local cemetery. Changed the price structure of the golf VIP program at Cross Winds. Before, we recommended a per-round increase for the copay. We did away with that, kept it at the current $5 per round discount, but simply increased the price of the cards by, two of the cards were $5 each, the bronze and the silver, so it'd be a good deal for golfers. Little bit of background, talking to Phil and Bob, we sold 215 last year, each member used it about 16 times. What amounts to, if they buy the bronze card, they'll pay $45 to save 80, so it's still a good deal for golfers, if they play just the average number of times. Kind of simplifies and reduces the number of changes. We've kept the community garden plots at their current rate of $15 to $20. We've increased the non-fee waiver registration for our camps and after-school by $5, just to account for increased costs for field trips. We used to get free meals during the breaks, but we don't get that anymore from the summer feeding program. What I mean by fee waiver, if somebody's on some kind of public assistance, they get a reduced rate at our camps and our programs, but they all pay the registration, which covers the special trips. We talked about the rollback at Riverview Golf Course, and at the end of last month, our play had already matched all of last year's, we're around 10,880 rounds. Revenue is, it's, the rounds are up around 38%, revenue's up about 18% because we've rolled the fees back, and we will look at that again and revisit this issue at, by the second meeting in August, see if we, based on course conditions and play, if we should leave this in effect or adjust our fees. We're recommending a $1 increase at Paul Walker when we reopen after the greens replacement. Again, we're still asking for the slight increase of our picnic shelter, our newer picnic shelter rentals, and the modest loyalty program at our fitness center for members have been there for 10 or 15 years.
What, what price was the shelters to begin with?
We had different prices, let's see, $7.50, $10, $15, or $20. We've gone up, the $7.50s are now, I believe, $10, and the 15s are gone up to 20. And those are basically the newer shelters, the ones that we've remodeled. And those are basically the newer shelters, the ones that we've remodeled.
No.
I would just like to thank Ernie. We did, we spent about two hours.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
Before spring break.
Yes, right before spring break. I appreciate him taking the time and giving me a background understanding of why fees, why he did what he did, and when fees had taken an increase over the years. So it was much better for me to understand. The fees that we discussed in proposing to increase as far as these registration fees, when we look at it, they all are still less than any program our citizens can get anywhere in our community. So it's really good. And want to stress, as Ernie said, this registration fee for these programs, when a child is registered, if we take them on a field trip, take them anywhere, if there's a fee involved for that field trip, this registration fee takes care of that. So the child or the parent is not out any more money. As we all can imagine, everything continues to go up. So we anticipate the prices of these field trips to go up. So, you know, recommending a $5 increase for those fees. Two cleared up as far as Riverview's concerned, recommending keeping them at regular price, not reducing them at this moment to half price, correct? Not reducing the fees, rounds of play to half, but we will review it at the board meeting in August.
Ma'am, I was recommending reducing them by the $5 green fee now. That's what I was recommending.
Was that reducing?
And revisiting them in August to see if we need to either raise them up or see if it's working, still getting the play and the revenue.
Was it reducing it or just keeping it the same price that you already had brought it down?
We've been running about a constant special on it. And that's brought up play and revenue, mayor. But that's our recommendation. I was asking if we just let it go for a while longer, get some experience, and if we need to adjust it, before Labor Day, we'll do that. We'll come back and report to the commission. But right now, like I said, play and revenue are up significantly at Riverview, and that's what we were after.
So I'll know, because I misunderstood that. So what are the proposed fees for Riverview? I'm sorry, I'm not.
Essentially, to keep her discounting, you're couponing.
Right.
Still being $5, $12, $6, and $17 versus $10, $17, $11, and $22.
Yes, ma'am. It'd be $5 green fees. Cards remain the same, but this was green fees.
Did you say revenue was up?
Yes, sir.
By how much?
About 18%.
And that translated into?
You've stumped me on this. I brain freeze, I'm so. About $17, about $18,000.
Okay.
$17,500, $18,000. But again, we're getting play there, and that's, I feel that's what we're after. And it's disadvantaged part of town. I believe it's a good move to match the quality of the course, conditions, locations with its fee.
Yes, thank you.
The only comment I would have, Ernie, or the city staff, is that from a policy perspective, and of course, I'm only one part, is that the direction for me would be to keep the fees as reasonable, as low as you can on any of them. And I see in this document that that's what you all have done. And you all have, I know you continually review them, and, but again, I appreciate the work you've done. But again, my perspective is that you just keep them as low as you can. And I think the public will understand some modest increases if we have to do that. And I know that you're, I believe that's your all's philosophy as well.
Yes, sir, it is. Last major increase we had was probably around 2010, when the minimum wage went up. That affected our operations probably more than anybody.
You asked for information from 208 about the various fee structures and on everything we charge for. And you can see that the thesis you just offered is correct. We keep the prices stable and only raise when there's an event, like a minimum wage increase, addition of new carts in which we have to pay for. We tried to keep it, at the risk of being cute, keep everything at par as much as we can, so.
We pre-service and we look at rate increases.
Just wanted to comment that I'm glad that I didn't see that we went to this across the board raising of every fee. So I appreciate.
I surprised you, didn't I?
I appreciate not going in that direction. I want to piggyback on Commissioner Walter, kind of stole what I was going to say, but I will go along and say that I don't think from fiscal year 2008 till fiscal year 2012, you could find anything in the private sector that has been able to keep rates at the prices we have. Even when we had the minimum wage change in 2010 and rates had to be increased, in a lot of those cases, we're talking about $1 and $2 increases. And so I think it's important for people to hear, if they're not hearing it elsewhere, what a good job Parks and Rec is doing to make not only recreation available, but recreation affordable to people in Bowling Green. Because it's one of the key features that I hear from people all the time when they talk about what a good city we have, they generally lead with what good parks we have.
Thank you. We feel like we're here to include people and not exclude them on fees. And you're right, plus with recession going on, it'd be a hard time justify any kind of fee increase. If you'd almost as a tax or something, this would make sense to us.
My next question, or I guess that was a comment. My next question is related to the burial fee, which I'm not opposed to. What I am concerned about is that the welfare center does pauper burials.
That wouldn't change anything.
None of that would change.
No, sir.
A lot of people don't recognize that there are people who die in Bowling Green on a regular basis who don't have family and don't have money and without the welfare center's ability to bury them in a pauper burial. I don't really know what happens if they don't step up.
Is that still 100?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's, there's a total fee, and the funeral directors get a portion, we get a small portion of it.
Can I have Ernie make a pitch for Arbor Day this Saturday?
You want to do that now, or are you coming back tonight?
I'd like to do it now, if you don't mind. Beginning at 9:00 Saturday morning at Carriakis Park. The good mayor will be present. I need to pre-warn you that the good judge will be giving the.
We're supposed to try to get people there.
That the good judge will be giving the keynote, so I may not have said that.
Bring a chair.
Slim had volunteered to do the keynote address this year, so we put that on the program.
I have at Arbor Day before. I like Arbor Day. I'll sing like John Denver, if you'd like.
Also, some little different for the pledge and the flag raising. The Girl Scouts want to this year to celebrate their 100th anniversary.
Great. Good. I actually had that written down for notices tonight.
And Jared's been bagging trees for two days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. I appreciate it's a lot of work you put into this, and thank you for helping us understand which direction we're going. That's the last regular item on our work session agenda. Anything from the commission?
Yes, sir.
We'll be back at 7:00.